Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn School Committee meeting for September 18th, 2024. The meeting, the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. All are welcome to join us here in person at Five West Street. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. And thank you. Could we stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenging challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone here for citizens' comments? Hi.
Sorry.
Hi. Oh, is it Meg's student rep? Oh. Oh, that's okay. Oh, that's okay. Don't worry. How are you? Is that our student rep? Yeah. Okay. I was like, is she a citizen here to comment? All right, well, welcome. And I don't see any citizens here to comment, so we will move on to special recognitions.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, I'd like to take a moment to recognize AA Transportation for their ongoing support and collaboration in ensuring we have terrific bus drivers and that our buses are safe for students. I'd also like to specifically recognize Judy Donna Bedia and the driver on Bus 7. Judy was recently hit in the, in the bus by a vehicle after leaving Auburn High School. Thankfully, the bus had no students on it at the time. Judy sustained no injuries, nor did the person that hit her. Upon meeting with the Auburn Police Department, as was required of her, the other driver was cited for the accident. Judy left the scene with a maintenance vehicle to then retrieve another bus to finish her elementary route. So by the time I arrived at the accident, Judy had already left the scene to go and get another bus to finish her elementary route. And she just, all of our drivers are really terrific. But Judy has been a longtime driver and goes above and beyond all the time. So I did give her a little card and a little note of thanks. On the bus, one day I met her up at PACC, so she knows that. I told her she would be recognized tonight, but I just have to say she does a terrific job, even though I think she might have a little bit of a jinx going because yesterday afternoon, as she pulled into PACC, Bus 7 died.
Oh, God.
And so they had to wait for another bus to come. But I think that's the third thing for her, so I think she's all good now. She's all good. But I do want to thank our drivers and AA Transportation, and particularly Judy in this event. It was a really, she really went above and beyond.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Yeah, thank you, Judy. I thought she'd be here, but it's okay.
Yeah, I told her. I said, she can watch it on the TV.
All right, great. Seek approval for the minutes from September 4th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 4th, 2024 minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. And we have student reps tonight for the first time. Yay! So we know Molly's returning with us. If you could also introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you.
My name is Eve DeRocher. I'm the junior class representative. I play, I run cross-country and track at school. I'm in multiple clubs. And I have a big family, and I'm excited to be here.
Nice. Welcome. Thank you, welcome.
Hi. Thank you. So at the beginning of the school year, we had our senior sunrise, which went very well. The whole school came. We brought lots of baked goods and fun things. We also did our senior, like, car decorating, so that was a success. And then we had our senior tie dye, which we all wore shirts to the first day of school. Sports and teams started and are doing well and are excited for the months to come. And there's been a lot, it's been a positive environment at school so far. Many clubs also started back up, and Friday Night Lights have come back, and the student section is excited for this Friday's game against Tantascaqua. Also, this September, it's very important that we give a shout out to the game that's happening at 6:00 PM at the high school for Mateo. It's going to be happening for leukemia awareness, and we encourage everyone to be there and wear orange in his support. We also have senior seminars starting for seniors with the application for colleges and the season approaching. We also have the Homecoming Pep Rally on 11, on the 11th Friday with a home F and L game to kick off the weekend. Games will be held throughout the day, and the dance will be held on Saturday, the night of the 12th. The loading band will be performing at the Big E, and the fall play Footloose tryouts are this week. And then one last thing our school is doing this week, which is really important to us, is the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative. All of this week, we have Start With Hello announcements, and some of the activities include encouraging students to make new connections in the building, maybe say hello to someone new in a way that's like positive, making a new friend, and pledging to end gun violence and create a safe school environment by adding your fingerprint to the tree that we have hanging up in our school. Becoming more aware of warning signs and withdrawal from friends, bullying, lack of patience, or becoming angry quickly and making direct threats. So that's something that we're practicing at school this week. Thank you.
Lots of great stuff going on. When was the, the game for Mateo? Was that this Friday? Next?
So, yeah, the 25th.
25th, okay, great.
I think that's Wednesday, right? So that's?
Yes. Okay. Wednesday. Alrighty. All right, any questions or comments for our student reps?
No.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. You did a great job, both of you. Molly's an old hat at this, so.
It's a nice variety of things you shared.
Yeah, very much so.
Little smattering of everything.
Yeah.
So that's awesome.
Yeah.
Nicely done. Nicely done.
And do we have a date for Big E when they're performing there, or?
I don't think we're gonna date.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think it just started.
Just opened, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Okay, cool. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much.
You're free to go. All right, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Just an update on bus transportation. We continue to closely monitor this. We have been collecting student counts each morning and afternoon, and at this time, we are still within the safe capacity for each bus. We're going to continue to monitor that on an ongoing basis. If we got to the point that we did need an additional bus, which time will tell, but right now, we're in a much better, much better place than I might have anticipated. So that's a good thing. I did speak with AA Transportation. If we did need an additional bus that would be prorated for the amount of time during the school year that we would need that for, so we wouldn't be paying for a full year, they are very good to collaborate with. We did have an issue with some of our special education buses that were not arriving at schools in a timely way, which that can often happen at the start of the year. It didn't seem to be working itself out, so we did make some transitions of students, moved some kids around, and it does seem to be better. So we're going to continue to monitor that as well. We want to make sure everyone's at school on time. I added on here the next item, our budget priorities. Normally, at the kickoff of the budget, we do ask the school committee if there's anything in particular that you want us to maintain as a priority as we begin this budget process. Mrs. Stanek has already sent out all of the forms for principals, and everybody was like, it's just the first week of school. We're already talking about next year, but we are. So I don't know if the committee has anything that they wanted to share or talk about that we should consider as a priority as we look at next year.
Anyone have anything to add or thoughts?
I mean, I think just continuing safety protocols is like my biggest one.
I think for me, my biggest one is class sizes, making sure we're maintaining those, like, smaller class sizes, just to give the kids what they need. I think we're starting to see, like, we're starting to see kids coming in that, like, need a bit more assistance. So I think that we need to just make sure that we keep them at a reasonable amount.
No kindergarten classes of 30, please.
That's bad.
Meg?
I think we do a great job as is, and I think our principals know what they need, so I'm looking forward to see what they say.
Yeah. I agree with all those. And I would say just, you know, keep up the anti-bullying initiatives. And I think that ties into the Sandy Hook and school safety and everything else, so.
Thank you.
And thank you for asking, because, yes, much appreciated.
Great. So again, school and district safety. I was happy to hear about the Sandy Hook Promise from our student representative. We are implementing that process of the anonymous reporting system. All staff, all of the team staff at the building have been trained as of today. Oh, yes? Yeah, today. On or around September 24th, the adult teams in each building and here at Central Office will undergo a tip test where they send us and, you know, a tip to practice on, because there's a whole electronic dashboard with how you see the tip, how you respond to the tip. It allows you to communicate with your team members, so people know what each person is doing to manage the tip. So we'll go through that next week, and then we're hoping that training for all students and the remaining staff will be on or around October 21st and completed by November 20th. So we are well on our way to the implementation. All schools are still in the process of ensuring that positive connection to at least one adult in the school for every, every student. And in some cases, they've even started what some are calling TLC lists, where we have students who we recognize may need a little bit of additional attention, whether that be from guidance or from a teacher or from a PE teacher or from the principal or whoever it might be, to make sure that they can be successful in the school. So a lot of emphasis on this, and I am proud of the work that the schools are doing around this, particularly around Start With Hello and the Students Against Violence everywhere. So.
And it sounds like the high school is rolling it out, which is great, so.
Very good. They do some of those things through their community time, which is really a great time for them to have during the day, when they can build those things in, and kids are in their community with kids that they've been in community with, so it's, they're comfortable with who's there and with their teacher, so.
And through the chair, I've been seeing it through the middle school, too. We've been seeing, like, they have something every day, and so that's, they've been talking about it, too.
Yep.
Through the chair, this might be a weird question, but it just kind of popped in my head. Is there anything being implemented regarding kids who may have some anxiety regarding the numerous threats that have gone on elsewhere, where they can go in and, and talk about that stuff?
So the, the few days following the most recent event in Georgia at the high school and middle school, guidance and the SROs were around and available and talking with kids. We didn't make it like a school-wide assembly or anything that, but, but folks were out in the buildings looking, because when kids want to talk, they'll reach out. So there was that connection. And again, I think the system that you have all supported for us to have the social workers that we have and the guidance counselors that we have has been, without a doubt, one of the best investments we've made in this district and something that we just, I can't see us ever going without, because it's just made such a difference with those connections in that way, along with what all the teachers and other staff do, right, with those connections. But I think that any students that were struggling with that were addressed. I will also put a little plug. So Chandler Creed and one of our school psychologists had done a parent session at Swiss.
Next question.
On anxiety, with helping parents to work with kids around anxiety. He's now in the process of doing it with some of the faculty meetings for staff, and we feel like perhaps in late November, we may offer it again to families again. So some that couldn't come, I think they had about 25 parents that came for the first session, but maybe now again in October, someone will come, because it really is something that I think we all, either we ourselves experience, or we have someone in our family who experiences it. And so it really is something that can be managed with the right strategies, so we're trying to hit that from a few different angles.
Through the chair, that was similar to the, not, I think it was last year, the video that you put out.
Was that, no, it wasn't Screen Ages. It was Anxious Nation.
Yeah, that was fabulous, too.
Anxious Nation, yes.
I couldn't make it to the, the one, the most recent one, but that one was great. I, like, learned a lot from that one.
I did, too.
I thought that was a great option, and I think that, like, if parents can get there, it's really helpful. Because sometimes you don't recognize it, like, and kids, it comes up different.
I think, too, sometimes with things still associated with mental health, people don't want to talk about it because they feel like they're alone in it.
Yeah.
And when you see movies like Anxious Nation, or you hear a school psychologist talk about the prevalence of anxiety among students and adults, it, it relieves some, some of their own anxiety about even talking about that, you know? So we're going to keep pushing at it for sure.
What was the date of that, of Chandler's presentation?
Well, he, we don't have a date in October yet. He did it right before school started, because so many kids have anxiety about starting school. But then we talked to him about doing it again sometime in October.
Okay.
So that we can maybe get, get a few more families in.
Right.
Because it's still out there, right? Just because the first day of school is over, it's still out there.
Awesome. All right, thank you. We'll move on to new business.
So we found out late this summer that we have a student moving into the district from out of state who is currently in a residential placement. The student now lives in Auburn, and we are required to financially support this placement. The full year placement for the student is $341,761. The first person I spoke with was Town Manager Kazanovich. He understands that this is our responsibility. We did check to see if this were to, so the student came to us from out of state. If the student had come to us from another district in Massachusetts, since we didn't learn about their arrival until after July 1st, there would have been a cost share option. But because it's from out of state, we did have our attorney look into it. We are fully financially responsible for the student. So in speaking with Mr. Kazanovich, he said the best thing to do would be to request the money from the Special Education Stabilization Account and to do so in increments, because these situations can change, right? So he said, rather than request the full amount, let's request the first three months, and then I may have to come back to you in a couple of months and say, yes, the student is still here, we're going to need the money for our next payment and go from there. He does agree that this is exactly the purpose for which the Special Education Stabilization Account was created, was for when there's a huge unforeseen expense that, that lands in the district, and that's exactly what happened here. So this evening, I am looking for your approval to do that out of Special Education Stabilization. There is a sheet in your packet with the revolving account balances, but the current balance of the stabilization account is $602,883.96. And from what I understand, the way this will work is, so this year, we are fiscally responsible for the entire amount. But what will happen next year is we will now claim this child through our circuit breaker, and Circuit Breaker next year will reimburse us 70% of any amount over $45,000. So we will get a significant Medicaid reimbursement for this student next year. It just doesn't help us to pay the tuition this year, but hopefully that will offset some of the costs next year. We're still working with our attorney and again with Mr. Kazanovich about this, and before it is finally approved, you have to approve, and it does have to go before the select board as well to access that money. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Through the chair, do we know about how many years this will be in our budget?
So at least two.
Okay.
The student is currently an 11th grader.
Okay.
So it, that may be that, but there's some, it, it's all going to depend upon whether or not the student graduates.
Gotcha. Okay.
And is this an in-state placing or an out-of-state placement?
In-state.
Okay.
In-state, but the student was previously a resident out of state.
Okay.
All right, any more questions or comments for Dr. Chamberlain? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion to utilize the Special Education Stabilization Account in the amount of $84,270 to cover three months of residential tuition for a new student.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, let me know when you go before the board's selectment. I assume it's Monday.
Oh, Monday, okay. This coming Monday. All right. Yes.
Okay. Good times. All right.
Thankfully, you all and the town had the forethought, because can you imagine if that funding wasn't available to us in this situation? And that's what, what, I think that was the reason why these accounts were established, because that did happen to districts, where all of a sudden, they had a huge expense like that, and they were ill-prepared, you know? We don't have that kind of wiggle room in any school budget. So thankfully, the forethought was there, so that's, that's awesome.
I had one other question through the chair, and I'm not sure. Is this a, a student that we reevaluate next year to see if it's a proper placement or if there is a cheaper alternative?
Yes, so there are regular team meetings.
Okay.
Just like there would be for any special education student.
Okay.
Mr. Walton would attend those to see if there are other options. So yes.
Alrighty. Any more questions? Right?
Thank you. So the next item is Parent Square. So Parent Square is a communication tool. It can also be used as a website tool. We're looking at it right now primarily for communication. That would allow all staff, myself and all teachers, to use this in a way to communicate with families. And the reason that we're finding it to be very attractive is that it coordinates with Power School, so that if when you register with us, you note that your home language is Spanish, when I, as the superintendent, send out my bi-weekly newsletter, you would automatically receive that in Spanish. And they have over 130 languages in the program. Likewise, if you want to email me, you can send me an email in Spanish, and when I receive it, it will be in English. And so each teacher can have their classroom account, where they can, they can communicate individually with families, or they can communicate with their classroom as a group. Right now, a lot of our teachers use free things like Remind. They use Sign Up Genius for when they need volunteers. This has an option for doing those things built in. There's a bunch, you can do electronic field trip forms through this program, and again, they all go out, but they're all translated. So right now, our EL tutors spend a lot of time taking things that might go home in a backpack or even in an email, getting it translated, getting it back to the principal or to the teacher. The amount of time and effort that's being spent to get that out, particularly now with the increase in students we have who require that translation, is enormous. And I think this would be extremely, extremely beneficial to all. It also speaks to student data privacy, where we're now in control of the tool with, that everyone is using to communicate with families versus having these other options that are out there that we really shouldn't be using. Eric Bouvier, very soon, maybe the next meeting will be coming before you with some updated policies around student data privacy and what we should and shouldn't be doing. So that's also coming, and this feeds into that perfectly. So you can, you can do a lot of things with this. I did learn today that there is an EL grant available for $18,000, which we are eligible for, that I'm going to apply for tomorrow, that would cover the cost for this for one year, maybe a year and a half. And we still have the EL funding that we received as a reimbursement that can offset that, so we can get at least through the next couple of years. And I think it would be, it would be a terrific investment across the board to have everything there. It would take the place of one call, because calls would go out through this. So again, also all translated. So you can also integrate it with Facebook, and if you wanted Instagram, and it will automatically post things to social media. So it's a very integrated program, so. More to come on that. When I learned of the grant, I was even more excited, so if we can get that grant, I, I think it would be money well spent.
And you think we could have this this year? Or is this something?
I do. I do, and I think probably we could maybe start our year, like, in January, and with programs like that, you don't, it doesn't run January to June. It'll run January to January, you know what I mean? So we'd get a full year out of it.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, it's terrific.
All right, great. Okay. Another update, wanting you to know that we are working very hard to improve our teacher evaluation process for teachers and administrators, and we have a few initiatives underway. So through the AEA contract, we revise what we call our professional practice walkthrough form or professional practice observation form. Teachers are expected to have several observations over the course of a two-year cycle, or if you're a non-professional status teacher, over a one-year cycle, which is going to provide more narrative feedback through, to teachers. And it also gives administrators more flexibility, where they can write up, for instance, if a teacher does an exceptional job explaining a student's progress in an IEP meeting, the principal could say, would you like me to use that as one of your professional practice observations? Because that's a big part of their professional practice, is to be able to come into a meeting prepared and understanding a student's need and to be able to explain that to a parent, along with the classroom observations. So it's opening up some more options for all of that. And as administrators, we're all going to be doing some training with Kim Marshall about rethinking teacher evaluation, and we've also all purchased the book that we're going to use kind of as a book study throughout the school year. So I don't know, for some reason, I feel like this year, like, there's just been a big shift, like, back to really focusing on the important things, right, around teaching and learning and talking about kids. So this is another way for us to do that. So I'm excited to do that with our team, because they're terrific. So just sharing for your information. All right, great.
The next item, and I will let Mrs. Stanek jump in on this as well. We are seeking your approval for a temporary payroll business office clerk. We had hired a payroll person in late July, I guess, who did not work out. So we have been basically, we, I shouldn't say we, Mrs. Stanek and Mrs. Ackley have basically been doing payroll since the start of this fiscal year, which has been an unbelievable task. Given that, there have been other things that haven't gotten done that Mrs. Ackley, who we hired, could have been doing, but she was helping with payroll. So there's been a lot of shifting of responsibility. And when I say responsibility, it's major responsibility. And so there are some things that we're finding need to be cleaned up, shored up, organized. And while I know this is a stretch to ask for some additional funding for this year, I believe through the EL monies that we've received that we can use again, it's a reimbursement we can use as we see fit. This is going to help our business office to get to a place where I don't think we've been in a long time as far as organization and structure and processes and procedures that need to be in place so that it's all done consistently and it's done the right way. So we are hoping that this position could be just this year to kind of get us out of a little bit of a, us from being behind. But the other thing I will say we're finding is that other districts who have half the employees we do have the same-sized business office. So we're going to have to see how it plays out. Right now, we're looking at this temporarily, but it may be something that we're going to need to add to really improve our efficiency. So I don't know if I missed anything, Jen.
No, and that was the point I was going to make, so as I'm doing the interview process and whatnot, people are interviewing with a district with 200 employees of running a payroll for that, and they have the same exact-sized business office that we have. And we're doing double that, if not more, because you're doing over 400 staff, along with all the substitutes, along with that. So this would be a huge support to us, because of course, being down a person and then, you know, some things will have to kind of be put to the side, and, and that's not great, because then we're always playing catch-up. So I do believe that this would support us, but it, it may very well be something that we need to consider because of the size of our district. We have grown a lot, and with all of your support, which is great, but we need to be able to sustain and support our students and staff in the district.
And I heard you worked all Labor Day weekend doing this crazy stuff, so.
She did all weekend. And this past weekend as getting ready for payroll. Payroll is no joke. Like, it is no joke.
Well, it's, it's a full-time job, and my job as a business manager is a full-time job, so it does, it is, and you know what? I'm going to continue to do that, but we need to find the right person, and I think we also need a little bit extra support as well. And through the chair, we don't need Mrs. Stanek burning out.
Right.
Because I, I am going to tell you, in short time, number one, she's taken on this payroll task, which is unbelievable, which, and I keep telling her, long-term, it's going to[1728.04] number one, she's taken on this payroll task, which is unbelievable, which, and I keep telling her, long-term, it's going to be a really good thing for her to know, right? Because that's how you can really change processes when you really know it yourself. But the, the accuracy and the temperament that she's brought to all of this, as hard as it's been, and she has worked on very, very, very long hours, it's still been with a smile and with a lot of pride in the work that she's doing. So I appreciate that. And, and I, I think by the end of this year, we're going to be in a really, really, really good place.
And I think we used to have a very archaic system. And Mrs. Stanek, who's technology, technological savvy, that didn't come out right. But yeah, you're trying to upgrade things a little bit. So I think that's even more put on your plate.
Right, and it's just going to help with the efficiency moving forward, you know? Because of our volume. It is a huge volume that goes through our business office.
Yeah, so, all right, hopefully we're all in agreement on this. I truly think it is needed. And fear of her burning out is definitely, yeah, a real thing, so. All right, I'd seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of a full-time slash temporary payroll slash business office clerk for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
It's a lot to ask. And I really truly appreciate that. So Mandy, I'll post that right thinking upon it.
And there's a lot of draws there. I mean, mothers' hours, right? Yeah, so, and it doesn't need to be some crazy, you know, expertise in the area.
So hopefully you find someone good. I think you will.
I think so too.
All right, good.
And just to give you an update on a couple of things, returning student registration, right? We started that a couple of years ago. So this past year was our second year, and by the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, we had nineteen hundred and fifty-three students or families who had successfully completed the process. Which is, you know, we have about twenty-five hundred students, give or take, but some leave, then you get new ones. So they're not really considered in the returning student registration. But secretaries did a great job with following up with anybody who hadn't done it, and it's really helping us to keep much cleaner data for our kids and much more up-to, up-to-date data. And again, this process also included that resubmission of the residency paperwork at grades three, six, and nine. And for the most part, families are able to upload the information into the system, either by a picture or a file, and it works out pretty well. So every year it gets better. But I do think that this was worthwhile, because we have encountered situations where folks, you know, they might provide residency paperwork, but it's from six months ago. And we asked for something within thirty days, and we have found places where residency really, they didn't live in, in town. Some folks get upset by it. I've lived here my whole life, why do I have to get, but, and I explained to them, because I want to make sure everybody lives here, you know? But so far, it's really gone well. We also implemented something called Level Data. It's like an app almost for Power School that lets secretaries easily see when there's anything, a field that maybe was missed, when, when a registration happened, or if a mailing dress, address isn't recognized by the post office, it even connects to that. And so now, again, they're able to make sure that data is really clean. So you put those two things together, and our student information system is light years from what it was just a couple of years ago. So really good stuff, all up to date. And as you all know, that myself, Chairperson Arrington, Vice Chair Ms. McRillis, members Brooke Rann and Samry Field will attend the three-day Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Conference down in Hyannis on November sixth, seventh, and eighth, and another yearly opportunity to hear about new and innovative practices. So yes, we're excited to go. We'll be here before you know it.
All right.
That's it for me for tonight.
All right, lots of good stuff there. We'll move on to Mr. Keller for the teaching and learning report.
All right, well, I know you guys get real excited when I have slides to share. So at the last meeting, I talked a little bit about the curriculum projects that teachers took on during the summer, and I also referenced some of the other work that we did, but, and so that I would come back to you and share that, and so that's what tonight is all about. The first was restorative practices, and before I kind of jump into what teachers did and administrators did with the restorative practices, I just wanted to define it. Some of you may already know, but ultimately, they kind of have these five key tenets, which is that the true self in everyone is good, wise, and powerful. We are all interconnected, the world is. Ultimately, human beings have a deep desire to be in good relationships. All humans have gifts, and everyone is needed for what they bring. And I know this is one of Dr. Chamberlain's favorites, is that everything we need to make positive change is already here. And when you go through restorative practices and the training, you realize the simplicity of it, and yet, the power, and you'll see some of that a little bit at the end when I talk, when I share some of the feedback from teachers. But it's a really simple practice, and sometimes you say, as you go through the training, why did it take so long to think through some of these things? So, you know, restorative practices have been around for a very long time, but the practices themselves in schools take on a certain flavor. And so it's about enabling youth and adults to bring forward their best self. And you probably have seen this pyramid or this triangle before. It's used in, from the Department of Ed around kind of all things academic and social, emotional, in that the bottom tier is what we give to all students. And so that is around community building and having conversations, things that a lot of times happen at the elementary level, when they have circles or, or kind of floor time and have conversations. But it's, it's building those relationships and having conversations. Step two is, or the second tier of that is restorative circles. And so when something does occur in the classroom, we have conversations about what might have occurred or the classroom rule that was broken, and how that person will make amends. And then tier three is about re-entering. So if somebody did something that broke a school rule, and how we address that and how we move forward. So go into a little bit more detail here in, in some of those things, but again, I kind of touched on that already. So in tier one, it's about creating that sense of community and trust in the classroom. Tier two, repairing that harm, and tier three is accountability. So a lot of times, people will say, well, there's no more accountability. There is accountability as part of restorative practices. What I will tell you is that in, in restorative practices, what we have seen is that it's a lot more difficult sometimes for a student to actually face the person that they offended and deal with that versus the traditional way of dealing with something where we would suspend a kid. Kid would be out of school, would come back, and they would not have to face that person that they harmed. And so there is still accountability, so there are still school consequences in some cases, but we build in this piece of restoration and trying to restore that person's setting in, in the, in the school, in the classroom, et cetera, as well as having the person hear from, from the other. So what we've done in Auburn so far, so in the summer of twenty twenty-three, we had twenty K through twelve staff attend a tier-one training. We had administrators K to twelve, and we had educators who were in grades three through twelve. This past summer, we had sixteen K to twelve staff attend a tier-two training, and then we had nineteen K to twelve staff attend the tier-one training. And in that, in that tier-one training, we had new administrators who were in new roles, and then we had K to twelve educators. So in year one, we prioritize at the secondary level, and, and then in this past year, we prioritize at the elementary level, but still had some secondary educators as part of that. We are working with Suffolk University. They have a really strong restorative practices program, and the feedback from our staff has been outstanding. Hopefully, you can see some of this. But just a couple of highlights that I pulled out from the survey that they, that staff shared. You'll see people excited to employ restorative justice in, in their classroom, talking about it already making a difference in the way that they approach situations. Somebody talked about not only using it with students, but also using it with their own children, kind of shifting the mindset away from punishment. I think it's just kind of human nature to say, okay, how am I going to consequence this person? Again, not to say that consequences don't happen any longer, but we also think about restoration. And multiple people talked about being vulnerable in front of kids and how important it is to be, to be vulnerable and showing sincerity and care for kids. So that was our restorative practices piece, and then a couple of pictures here that I wanted to share with you. It is, you know, I talked a lot about building relationships in the classroom, and you'll see that in, you know, a couple, like the bottom right-hand corner. This, you know, they have talking pieces, so oftentimes, when you start a circle, you might throw out a topic, and it might be simple as something. You say, you know, what are you looking forward to in this new school year? And everybody, and somebody would grab the talking piece, and everybody would kind of share. And so it's nice to have that sharing. It's also nice to hear from somebody that you don't ordinarily hear from in a classroom and to build that relationship. It's also used in learning practices. So I've seen a circle done at the high school. I didn't have my camera with me at the time that that was happening, but they were talking about something that they are struggling with in this concept. It was a science classroom. And so everybody kind of shared something that they were struggling with, and that gave feedback to the teacher to kind of talk about. They talked about it as a circle. He identified some groups that could work together for some students who weren't struggling with that concept. So there's a lot of benefits and a lot of uses to it. They're not just about classroom rules and building school environment. The second thing that I wanted to talk to you about was the other piece that started this past summer, and that is, Mr. Walt and I have been working with Swanson Road and the Middle School on language-based learning. So language-based learning disabilities are something that are coming to light increasingly, particularly around the area of dyslexia. So essentially, you know, kind of defining what LBLD are, are students who struggle with spoken or written language around decoding, reading fluency, reading comprehension, spelling, and written comprehension. Oftentimes, these students who have these struggles also have issues around executive functioning, working memory, and attention to tasks. And so increasingly, we are, and, and most of the time, these students have average to above-average intelligence. So it's just accessing these skills and trying to equip teachers with the strategies to help support these students. We contracted with Landmark Schools. Landmark Schools is one of the leaders in this, in this field of language-based learning. And so they have an outreach program that works with, with, with schools. And they focus on providing opportunities for success for students, taking a multi-sensory approach, structuring tasks into a smaller unit. So instead of, you know, having a six-week unit, and here's everything you're going to do, breaking that down as much as possible for students, giving students an opportunity to practice and review, and providing models for those students. And so really, it's building that automaticity. So a lot of times, these students will be successful in, in one moment, but then a week later have kind of forgotten that skill. So it's really important to make sure that there is that repetition that's built in as part of that. Graphic organizers are a big piece of that. Many times, you know, I talk about opportunities for success. Many times, these students have seen a lot of failure and struggle, and so building in those opportunities where they can see themselves as successful students in the classroom. So timeline, this past summer, we had fourteen staff members attend a two-day in-person training with our trainer from Landmark Outreach. And then we also, those same fourteen staff members took courses over the summer in understanding students with dyslexia, phonemic awareness, language-based learning disabilities, study skills, and written expression. We are continuing our work with Landmark this year, and hopefully well into the future, to build their skills in helping students access the curriculum. Actually, the consultant is coming in on, I think actually tomorrow, she's spending half the day at Swanson Road and half the day at the middle school to meet with teachers, do some classroom observations, give them feedback on what she sees, on making sure that they have consistent strategies in their classrooms. And again, I should probably make this bigger next time, but some of the feedback that you can see here, so I just, I plopped in one of the questions I asked them. This was, which of the following best describes usefulness of this two-day professional development? Eighty-seven percent of staff said it's impacted my thinking, and it will impact my work. And then twelve point five percent said it will support the collaboration with colleagues to implement language-based instruction. And the other three options were, it will not impact my work, it's too soon to tell, it was good, but I'm not sure what to do next. And so oftentimes, we give professional development, and people will say, this is great, but I don't know what to do from this. So I was thrilled to see that people not only felt like they learned a lot, but also know what to do on, on day one. And then you can see some of the comments as well, as benefiting students' diverse needs and barriers that they face, and they feel like they will have more effective and empathetic teaching strategies. Lastly, for me tonight, is I talked last time about our new educator welcome. You saw many of our new teachers who were here at the last meeting. I did give a survey to those teachers, and they, I, I felt like it was important to share some of the things that people said, is that how welcoming everybody has, has been to them, how excited they are to be part of APS. They feel as if loving their job more than ever. And, and then I'll just close with this little picture of us in front of the bus. I told you, we took a tour of Auburn. Mr. Jerry DeLongchamp was our tour guide, and you can see him on the far left. And our mentors come along on, on the bus ride, those that are able to make it here for that day. So that's a picture of Dr. Chamberlain, our, our new teachers, and the mentors, so.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
For the chair for future PowerPoints, can you just print me out a copy so I can actually see it?
Yes, I will, yes.
I'm like squinting, and I can't see it all. I, I, just one for me, please.
Well, I certainly need to make my font bigger for everybody, so.
I will say that I went through the restorative practice. I did tier two this summer. And it's some of the best PDA I've gone through in my career. It was really, but you had to be open and vulnerable and talk and share things. And we start our principal meetings with, it's a modified circle, because we're all on, I don't make them all come here for a meeting. We do our meetings on Google Meet. But we always start with something like, sometimes it's, what are you doing this weekend? And other times, it's, it's, today was, it was actually, how often are you or your teachers using circles in their classrooms or in their practice? So that's what we talked about today a little bit. And what I think it's done is it's helped us to slow down a little bit, to really look at each other as people when we walk into a meeting, and then we dig into the work. And I think it's helped kind of just improve the tone of the whole thing. So it's just been great. It's been really great.
Great. Awesome. And that's great to hear. Kids feeling comfortable enough coming forward with, you know, their own problems and not understanding things and stuff, because you know that the other kids probably feel the same way, and everyone's afraid to speak up, so. Yeah, good, great. All right, thank you. All right, Mrs. Stanek, you're up.
All right.
Financial.
I have provided you with a year-to-date budget report for the FY twenty-five school year dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four for your review. Just note that there are budget transfers that need to be done based on salary increases. So I have also provided you with a listing of those budget transfers dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, between the same series and between different series, for which I am seeking your approval.
I think they're attached to the revolving accounts. I think it's the last page.
Yes, it is. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I have also provided you with the proposed school department articles for the fall special town meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six PM at Auburn High School. The warrant articles have been included for your review and approval, as they will need to be sent to the town on or before September twentieth.
All right. Did everyone have a chance to look through those? Okay. Any questions or comments?
It's nothing unusual, right? We're not, we're not seeking any, even any CIP transfers. It really was, we anticipated a little bit more money in the Medicaid reimbursement, so we're asking for an increase there. We did get a one-time eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollar payment a year early for special education transportation. I'm sorry, for, for homeless transportation. And given that many districts in this past year experienced extraordinary expenses for homeless transportation, Desi paid a year ahead. So that was an unusual payment. We won't see that again next year, I don't think. So that was a different kind of article for us this year. And then we did estimate twenty-three, four eighty-one at the spring town meeting, and it really came in at thirty thousand, eight hundred and five. So it's just asking for that difference. So nothing unusual.
All right. No questions or comments, then seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the school department warrant articles for the September twentieth, twenty twenty-four fall town meeting, as presented by the business manager.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
And then Town Manager Jessanovich has requested the submission of capital improvement budgets for FY twenty thirty. So Mr. Fahy and I have met with the building principals to discuss future capital needs in their buildings and have formulated the budget for FY twenty thirty, and it is provided to you this evening and will require your vote of approval to meet the town requested submission date of October fourth.
Okay, I don't know where we'll be in twenty thirty. Probably like self-flying cars and whatnot, but. But yeah, look for a motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital improvement budget for FY twenty thirty, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor? I will not be sitting here in twenty thirty, so, yeah.
We'll see about that.
I think, I think one of my children graduates in twenty thirty-one. So one of us may still be sitting.
Yeah, holy moly.
Not be happy about it, but. I don't like to say the twenty thirty-one.
All right, do we need executive session tonight?
You do not.
Okay, seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, good night, everyone.